Good afternoon. People are supposed to respond, right? Good afternoon. Welcome to the December 8th work session of the Operational and Services, Operational Services and Policy Work Session. Start the meeting with a moment of silence. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is Agenda Review and Approval. Board members, does this agenda meet with your approval? Administration?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Move by Ms., or unruled second by Ms. Byer that we approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item four, Operational Services Policy Work Session Meeting Minutes from November 10th. Board members, any changes or updates to the minutes? We have a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Umstead, seconded by Ms. Byer that we approve the minutes from November 10th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item five is Public Comment. We do have two people signed up to speak, and we will do our best to remember that in the middle of the meeting, we will see if anyone who comes in late would like to speak as well. For our speakers, we have a time limit of about three minutes.
Okay.
And our first speaker is Shelley Morales.
Hello, my name is Shelley Morales, everyone. Sorry, I might not be as prepared as I thought I would be. A can of raid, poison spray being sprayed in my second, excuse me, my seven-year-old son's second grade class, where he coughed and choked, as well as other students in the class. My son Jawan has only been in the school for four days at that point. We just moved across town to a new school district. So I've been requesting a meeting since November 30th. I've came down, I spoke to Ms. Murphy a couple of times from the superintendent's office. I've withdrawn my students, my children, from the school because it has not been addressed. I later found out that my children were still enrolled. I found that out through student assignment when they did not approve of them going to a different school. So it's just been an ongoing issue. Just today, we got a meeting set up through Ms. Lois Murphy for tomorrow at 3:30, and I just got the call probably about an hour and a half ago. So I am really upset and hurt, not just for my child, but for the other students in the class. Because I do not believe that the parents know that the teacher is spraying this poison material around the children during instructional time. My children have been out of school since December 1st, when I took them out of the school. We've never had an issue until now. I've volunteered at DPS. My mother works for DPS. I'm just trying to get closure. I really would like to have my children into another school where we shouldn't have to go through that, and they shouldn't have to worry about infestation in the classes. I do not want infestation in my home. This has caused a lot of stress. I've had asthma attack on Monday this week. I am very ill, and that's the reason why we moved, because I live in public housing. And I have moved to a handicapped accessible unit. I just would like to see how it can be resolved, and how long should it take that my children are not enrolled in the school? I really want them to go to school. I have eight honor roll students. And this is one of my children. My other son is sick, and he couldn't come. Thank you.
Thank you. We want your kids in school too, and someone with the administration will follow up with you, and please do take that meeting and where it goes, and we will get back information from the administration as to how it's going.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Kevin Overcash.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kevin Overcash, and I represent a North Carolina-based Energy Services Company. The company's name is Piedmont Service Group, and we're currently doing work for six of your schools, installing building automation control systems and working with your maintenance group to do that work. I also represent an advocacy group, not-for-profit Energy Services Coalition, where I serve as co-chair jointly with members of the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, formerly the Energy Office. And that organization educates on the use of specifically performance contracting. And so that's the nature of my comment. Performance contracting, I believe the accolades of such has been spoken to in previous board mem, board meetings. The state recognizes it as a productive means to upgrade the facilities and to do so in a way where all costs are covered and no impact is made to the taxpayers. In 2016, Wake County Public Schools, Brunswick County Public Schools, and Alamance-Burnington Public Schools all issued RFPs for performance contracting, and since the summer, I've spoken with members of DPS about a similar RFP to be issued by Durham Public Schools, but have not yet seen such RFP. And so the comment may be a question is, if Durham continues to anticipate to issue an RFP for performance contracting, when that would be? And if any additional educational sessions would help in that process, certainly the Energy Services Coalition can do that. So I'll be available with cards and bring questions on this comment.
Thank you, Mr. Overcash. Sounds like you are in touch with Mr. Overcash already, but we'll do it again. Great, appreciate that. All right. I'll just ask now, did anyone come in in the next, in the last few minutes that would like to make public comment? Typically, we allow public comment on individual items, and so you could have signed up for that, so I'm okay with it. Board members, are you okay with that? Please.
Sorry, I meant to also add that the principal at Glenn Elementary School has called me several times, Mr. Redfern, Cornelius Redfern, on December 5th, as well as the data manager, threatening me with truancy court. And that's why I've been back and forth up here with Ms. Murphy and everything, and I just really would like having communications to be stopped.
Thank you. Yes, is the phone number you provided on the sheet the best number to reach you? Okay, someone will be in touch. We're sure. Okay.
Brings us to the Financial Services Section. Mr. Bowyer, if you'll take us through that.
Good afternoon. Before you today, we have our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is our audit through June 30th, 2016. With us today, we have Mr. LaSueur with our Budgeting Department. Ms. Frankie Carrigan is also a very instrumental part of preparing these financial statements. But we're fortunate to have Evan Reeves with Reeves &amp; Associates. They're the auditing firm that conducts this audit. So with that said, I'm going to turn this over to Evan Reeves for his presentation on our financial statements.
Well, thank y'all. I am Evan Reeves' partner at Reeves &amp; Associates, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide the audit services for you. You are handed out a summary that we're going to go through over the next little bit, and I'll make it as brief as I possibly can. But you do have the CAFR, the audited financial statements, and there's a lot, there's a lot of information in there. So if you have a chance to go through it and read it word for word, I do advise you to pay attention to the management discussion and analysis. That'll give you a good overview of the financial statements themselves, kind of give you the outlaying of them, how they are laid out, plus it'll give you a good comparison from 2016 to 2015. But to start, I'm just going to go through this. I'm going to flip through somewhat quickly, and I'll try to point out some areas just to pay attention to, but from an audit standpoint, just to give you an idea of what we do, we test compliance with federal and state awards, and along with your financial information. We take your financials, making sure what is in your financials are accurate, and they actually represent Durham Public Schools. We test compliance of the federal and state laws, and overall, you receive an unmodified opinion from a financial standpoint, and an unmodified opinion for your federal programs, and an unmodified opinion for your state programs. Means you're in compliance with auditing standards and standards for state and federal regulations. There are no findings. Unmodified opinion is the best opinion you can get. I'm going to flip over, there's going to be a letter, also in here, it's got our letterhead. This is just some required communication from auditors to management and the Board of Directors. Just if we have any difficulties during the audit, which we didn't, it goes over a couple of items in there. No significant issues are addressed, just some required stuff that auditors are required to communicate to the board. So if you have any questions as you go through that, I can be reached. There's some contact information on our letterhead that I can be reached at if you have any specific question. But nothing specifically that I need to bring to your attention as of right now. Now I'm going to flip to the good stuff, the financial stuff, what everybody thinks the auditors do on a regular basis. We go through the financial figures. We also do other things, such as internal controls and everything, but this is the good stuff, the meaty stuff within the audit. And this is a trend analysis, I just wanted to show off my graphing skills, so there are several graphs in here. You'll actually see some trends. So the blue bar is a general fund balance. So you can see the increase from 2009 to 2013 and 14. And during that period of time, you were getting stimulus money. You were getting a bunch of federal funds in addition to what you would have been getting. You were building your general fund balance, because you knew in the future you were going to have to use that fund balance to maintain those services that you're receiving, that you were providing in 2010 to 2013. So right now, you're kind of eating away at your fund balance at a good rate, and that leaves you at a general fund balance of $30,000. That may seem a little high, but when you dig down to it, a lot of it is already restricted and assigned for purposes as of June 30th. Oh, excuse me, 14, 14.2 million, excuse me, I read the wrong line when I went through that. Thank you. Thank you. I glanced down really quick. So this is going to be the base, so we're going to flip to the next page, and this will give you a little bit more detail in your general fund balance. I've highlighted the unassigned balance. For 2016, your unassigned balance was $450,000. If you compare that to 2015, your unassigned balance was $4.7 million, a significant change from one year to the next. A good indication that you're trying to maintain those services that you provided many years ago, when you're receiving that additional federal money. So to do that, you have to kind of eat away your fund balance, or to maintain. So I just wanted to provide you the detail of you're actually unassigned there, at your total fund balance is 14 million. A lot of that was actually designated for specific purposes as of June 30th. Of course, this is five months ago, so keep that in mind, so things have changed significantly in five months. The next page is just a bar graph, a line graph, just to kind of show your revenues by funding source. So your blue line are your state funds, your red line are your local funds, your green are your federal funds. So you can actually see they kind of heal, a little bit of a heal, a little bit of a crest in 2010 and 2011, and then you have a steady decline in your federal funds. It's hard to see, because there are big figures from the state fund overall. So the primary increases in the state funding are salary increases over the past couple of years. Please stop me if you have any specific questions. Do my best to answer the specifics. This is, the next is just a green bar graph to just kind of give you a total funding for your general fund, for your governmental funds, total funding for everything overall. So in 2011, you of course were significantly higher than you were in 2016. A lot of that is associated with the RFunds and stimulus money that you were. So you're doing the same, provide, trying to provide the same services you did with more money, but you're doing it with less. So that's kind of why you're eating away your general fund. The next sheet is just a little table comparing your major expenses. So we're going to have salaries and wages, employee benefits, your purchase of services, supplies and materials, and a percentage of your total budget. So if you take your salaries and wages in 2016, it's 58% of your total budget. Your employee benefits are 19% of your total budget. So employee benefits and salaries and wages make up approximately 77% of your total budget, and this is the school system in total. And then that leaves you about 23% for everything else, technology, maintenance, utilities, all that. So it's just, it's a different way to see this, and it kind of condenses all the information that, all the information that is in the CAFR down just a little bit. The next page is the Child Nutrition Net Position. Kind of give you the financial.
I'm sorry, can I?
Sure.
I'm just catching up. So back that one page on the expenditures by type. So if I understand this correctly, that the payments to charter schools is considered part of our overall budget?
Of your overall budget, yes, sir.
When I look on the, on that table there, that includes those payments? Okay.
So your, your local monies are coming from the county and the city. So a portion of that is going to go to those students and those charter schools. And I'm glad you mentioned that, because I forgot to mention that. So your payments to charter schools increased $2.5 million in one year. So from 2015, you spent $16 million, payments directly to charter schools. 2016, you paid $18.5 million directly to charter schools. So as there's more and more charter schools, that's going to continue to grow pretty significantly.
Thank you. I actually had a question there, too. Thanks for stopping. On the salaries and wages, I would assume from this that that means like literally DPS employees? Or does it factor in when we put out a million-dollar contract and, right, and they have employees? Does that come into that? I wouldn't think so.
That is going to be under purchase of services. So this is actually DPS employees. There are specific object codes that are used, and this is only Object Code 100, which is DPS employees. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next is the Child Nutrition, which kind of gives you the wealth of the Child Nutrition Program. You can see a big drop. A lot of that is associated with some accounting pronouncements and some changes regarding the pension and how to account for the pension plan. So your total wealth from a business standpoint in the Child Nutrition Program is about $1.4 million. That's a decrease. I think there has been a decrease, significant, significant decrease in the Child Nutrition Program in the current, past year, 2016, and that becomes harder and harder as food costs continue to go up. And I'll show you, the next graph is going to kind of be a little eye-opening to show you where your money is actually coming from. So the majority of your money in the Child Nutrition Program is coming from federal reimbursements. You can see the spread between federal reimbursements over the past 10 years to food sales. There's more and more coming from federal reimbursements. That means there's more and more students enrolled in the free and reduced lunches. That's where your money is coming from. So if you take your food sales, it's a very small portion of your total revenues that you generate in the Child Nutrition Program. It's a lot easier to kind of see it on a graph than it is to look in the financial statements and just look at Excel tables. For the most part, that's kind of what I wanted to cover. If there any, if there is anything specific, I'll be happy. But I know this is a recurring thing, y'all go through this in pretty much good depth from my understanding on a regular basis.
Bert, and I don't even know who this question would go to, and this last graph about the food, Child Nutrition, where the food sales are going down, federal is going up. Does charter schools, I mean, the enrollment, the individuals that are going to charter schools, would that affect this graph? So the ones that would be purchasing food? You know what I'm saying, like, so? Right. So when did we start universal breakfast, and when did we start universal lunch? Because what I'm asking, because this actually trend line is actually just, that is not, I would expect that.
I'd too, I think part of it is equipment allocation. We did about three-quarters of a million in equipment, so we assigned some fund balance from Child Nutrition for that. And also, I think it represents some shifts in à la carte sales and revenues from some of those things. We can dig into why some of the moves are occurring on the graph, give you some feedback.
I'm not necessarily, I was just, just, just a conversation point. I'm just, I think, I think the movement of students has deeper impacts than, that are readily noticed, and that just jumped out. And I'm, you know, I'm looking at, you know, the increase in charter schools, the decrease of food sales. I'm trying to see, you know, enrollment versus our food sales. I'm just trying to see, is that another indication of what's happening here, you know?
And I think that part of, part of an answer, at least it directs us, you know, point us in the right direction, is looking at the charter schools' free and reduced lunch.
Right, okay.
And I suspect that a lot of the parents are, are not qualifying. A lot of the families are not qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So you're taking kids out of our schools who would have paid, sending them to charter.
Well, there, I mean, there are some schools that don't have cafeterias, right? So I mean.
Right.
Can't have free and reduced lunch if you don't have cafeterias, right?
I doubt that the charter schools' free and reduced lunch is 65, 68% like Durham Public Schools.
So it is, it is though healthy to have a Child Nutrition Program that even operates in the black. I mean, that's unusual as well in North Carolina, I think.
Most districts lose money.
You know, and part of that, too, is decisions that the board has made on ensuring that there is healthier food in our cafeterias, even beyond the federal guidelines.
I just want to reiterate, thank you for the presentation, and for those who didn't hear to begin, and no finding is a good thing. It's always a good thing to see an auditor say no finding, you know? That's not a, that's not a bad thing, so.
In your good hands.
Yeah.
Well, and I just, I think that's worth giving some emphasis to, because like anywhere, we spend most of our time focusing on what we're not doing, and really, in this case, Mr. Bowyer's job is primarily to make, to do this so that there's, so that we get a report of, of no findings. And it's, and it's, it's a huge amount of work, and it's done well. We need to stop to recognize that, and then we can, then we can grill them on what we need next, but.
It's also, but we also, not this report, but the previous auditing report received the three highest awards in the state, and that's another group of people that are looking at the quality of the work that's being done. We fully expect this audit will get high grades, too.
Mr. Bowyer, you're looking for action on this sometime? You looking for action?
Oh, yes.
At this meeting, or do you want to do it at the full board meeting?
So what is it we need to do on this?
Take an action to accept your audit for the 2016 school year.
I move that we accept the audit for this school year.
Becca?
Been moved by Mr. Unruh and seconded by Ms. Byer that we accept this year's audit as presented, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bowyer. Thank you, Ms. Reeves.
Thank y'all very much.
Board members, that brings us to an item that was on the last work session that was postponed until today, so we can have a good coverage on it. School Messenger process, and Chip is here to get us started.
All right. Mr. Sears, if you wish to set the context, otherwise I'll just give some initial comments about what this system is and what it does.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, you did. Yeah, no, the only context is as a, as an end user of our system, and, and one in which my daughter goes to a school where half our, half our families are Hispanic. There's, there's ever a question about good communication, quality communication. In fact, we have a neighbor that doesn't go to our school, but they actually have three adults that would, would really like to be on the school messenger, and so this prompted me to talk with Chip, and Chip gave us some great information, but this is, really goes back two years as to what is our messaging system, what does it cost, what are the benefits, and where are we? So this is just kind of a timely update. Thanks for doing it.
No problem. To give you a quick recap, Durham Public Schools has been using one robocall system or another for a number of years, and it's a very important means of getting in touch with our families, both at the school level for regular updates and at the district level, particularly for major events and weather. That's the, that's the most important function of the system. Our previous system, until we changed courses last year, cost was Blackboard Connect, and it cost about $121,782 for the fiscal year 2014-15. And as a district, we decided to look for more economical service. We moved to School Messenger, which is, we are currently spending $51,150 annually for that service. So it is less than half the cost, and it has the promise of providing additional, more robust services, including SMS texting. So we came before you to ask for the, to go with a different provider, and we talked a lot about the texting services that we hoped to provide. And when I assumed my role on July 1st, I thought I knew the system, and I thought I knew what it could do, and I've made some discoveries along the way. School Messenger is designed to provide, to link with our Power School System, which is our data managers use to keep contact information and everything else for all of our students. School Messenger depends on the information that is provided in School Messenger to provide us with home phone numbers, cell phone numbers, texting, texting email addresses and such. It also requires parents to opt in to receiving text messaging, and we have in the past gone through a manual process of asking parents to go to, to visit our website and to let us know what their cell phone numbers are, and we've farmed that information out to data managers in an effort to make sure that the Power School information was up to date and that, and that we could text you. School Messenger then sends an automated text message asking people to opt in or to opt out. Texting's really important for families with, for low-income families, it's, it is a reliable means of getting information out. What I've discovered since Mr. What I've discovered since Mr. Sears raised the question is that some decisions were made about in what context we would be sending school message, SMS messages, and who could send them. At the moment, principals do not have that functionality. I thought that they, I thought that they did. At the moment, SMS messaging has been earmarked exclusively for emergency messaging, for weather cancellations and things like that. And I don't know what the history of that decision-making was. I can, I can say that I have received complaints from parents that we're phoning and messaging them too much and the, and the alternative as well. But these are changes that we can make administratively. We can change our priorities. Working with IT, we've developed a calendar for training opportunities to give principals more, more understanding of what tools that they have to work with and how to use those tools. And we can also flip the switch very easily to give principals those more robust communications abilities. So School Messenger is a cost-effective product, more cost-effective than our previous product, with greater potential to provide more effective communications to our families that we're not yet fully utilizing. But we are discovering that we can do so. And it's our intent to move in that direction. One final, one final point about that is that we have, we have information about the number of families that we do have text messaging numbers for in Power School. The total unique cell phone numbers in the system are 6,174, of which 6,103. So we have roughly 6,000 valid SMS number, text, text available numbers in our system. We have to work with our data managers to help them understand that if a family has a, does not have a landline, if a cell phone is their only number, that that needs to be entered as a cell phone as well as a main number. Otherwise, we do not know that, as, as a system, we do not know that that phone number is capable of receiving text messages, as we discovered with one parent who is moderating this meeting right now. Oops. So we need to work on, we need to do continued professional development with our data managers on that to make sure that they're able to do that. We need to resurrect my predecessor's Google form and drive to encourage people to sign up for the service. But it is, it is going to be an ongoing challenge. I talked to my colleagues in Guilford County and Wake County, and they have moved more slowly than we have in even attempting to use text messaging as a service. They have not found a solution that they are satisfied with, with the keeping up with the data in Power School, keeping the, keeping the data managers, the data managers constantly updating the information, getting families to opt in, opt in. Roughly half of our, if we have roughly 6,000 valid telephone numbers in the cell phone fields in Power School, only we have more than 3,000 of them who have not accepted the automated message that says, "We'd like to send you text messages." And 69 of those families have specifically blocked us from sending them text messages. So it's going to be an ongoing challenge to make the best use of the system, of the system. But it is a robust calling system. It is a less expensive calling system. And there is an upside to what we'll be able to do with the system going forward.
Okay, so out of all of the families in DPS, we only have 6,000 cell phone numbers in the cell phone fields in Power School?
That is correct. We have 34,526 parent records as of the time this report was done. We have 6,000, we have roughly 6,000 cell phone numbers. And some of those are, some of them are two different cell phone numbers within the same family.
Right, okay. So cell phone number, when the little cards are filled out at the beginning of school or put, is put in there, at that point, does a opt-in happen? Or do you have to go to the website to opt in? I thought I heard a step of going to the website.
School, we, we previously set up a Google form to try to catch people who we didn't know that had a cell phone. If, if a parent says, if a parent fills out the form and says, "My main number is," and they give us a cell phone number, we don't know it's a cell phone.
Right.
And that was what that extra step was intended to do. If, if school mess, if the form is filled out completely and we have a main number and a cell phone number, School Messenger is supposed to automatically send a text message to that cell phone number saying, "Hey, we'd like to send you this text message from your school system." And then...
That, that's supposed to happen now?
That's supposed to happen now.
Didn't happen to me.
Didn't happen.
Hasn't happened to me. Or my wife. And so...
You sure your wife didn't block all those?
She blocks her school board representative. But...
As, as we've discovered, as we've discovered with Mr. Sears, I hate to use our, I hate to use our board members' test scenarios, but that is exactly one that we should test.
So what I'm trying to figure out is where the opt-in happens? Is it, once the number is put in and saved in Power School, an opt-in message should go?
As soon as, as soon as School Messenger scrapes Power School and gets the contact information, that's when the, that's when the text is supposed to go out.
Okay, and...
The initial.
And so School Messenger provides the plug-in to do that?
Right.
We need to, we need to make sure that that's connecting correctly.
Will do.
There's, seems to be some points of failure there.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that there's not another step. So providing your number, then you have to go here to say, "I want to opt in." I want to make sure that it's one step. You submit your number, get your opt-in, and boom, like that.
Is that if, if they list their cell phone number as their home phone, it won't get picked up?
That's correct.
So they have to list it as their cell phone number?
Right. And what we're, what I've talked with, with our people about is the form, the form was just revised last year in part as an effort to try to capture this information. And the, the form that parents fill out has every full, field that Power School needs. There's a field for main phone, there's a field for cell phone number. What I'd like to do is go back and add a checkbox to main field and say, that's, that indicates this, that my, my main number is also my cell phone number. Again, it's going to take time for our data managers to go back and make those updates.
Maybe I'll just write an app to check the numbers. You can check that. If you try to text a landline, it'll come back and say it's invalid text number. That's, it's in the exchange. So, you know, maybe you guys go to School Messenger and say, "You guys need a check." You know, import our numbers.
Mr. Lee, you would think that a company, a company that provides this kind of service for millions and millions of families across the, across the country would have figured this out.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
I like to kind of walk it back and make sure that we take the time, though, to do this right. And I'm a person that doesn't like a lot of text messages that are not valuable. I don't know. I think, I think we get, this is something that could be overused as well. And so when we're talking about training our people, I think it's really important to... I think some of our principals are almost overusing Connect Ed messages, let's say, with, you know, four-minute-long messages going home on Sunday evenings. I'm interested in, in y'all figuring out the technical glitches, and I won't have any solutions for any of that. But the, the best practices of when to text, and I think there's probably some families that still get charged for texts, which is probably why they're opting out. And it almost might be worth having a focus group of families or something to say what best practices would be. But if I got a text every other day about some fundraiser or something that wasn't related to my kid, I'd think that you can, you can damage the brand name of Durham Public Schools by overuse of text, is a little bit of my hesitancy in conversation.
I don't think we're at that point yet. But yes, the point is, the point is well taken.
Just because you can, doesn't mean you always should.
And there's also, it's also been, it's also been made clear that we need to provide training for our principals, not only on what, what services that they have available to them, but also best practices, as Ms. Byer said. And that's, and we've, that's been put into a schedule that we've worked on for regular principal training.
And I have to confess, is I really do encourage principals to call every Sunday afternoon with the four-minute message. I, I do believe, especially for middle schools and high schools, where students are not taking home any kind of communication whatsoever. So it is a main conduit of information.
I love it, but if people don't answer it and they hang up on it because it's so long, then you, you know what I'm saying? So there's a, yeah.
In my experience, his, his parents complain about it and, and also listen to it, for the most part. And that's where they, that's where they get their information. So they, they sit there complaining all the time as they listen to the whole message, so. So, and yeah, and they, because they all know how to say roll fire itself, so we know that they're getting to the end of the, of that message. The opt-in, I've always wondered about this. Are we legally required? Is this, we're legally required for it to be an opt-in?
Yes. It is like, it is a legal requirement. And School Messenger sort of insulates themselves from falling... By protecting us, they're also protecting themselves, the, requiring the opt-in before they trigger anything.
I wonder if it could be, if you're going to revise the, the form anyway, if we can just have a checkbox that says...
That, that won't, that won't do it for them. Now, there are, there are some things, and I was, I was looking for a copy of this, and Elaine had it. They do have a telephone, text number, 67587, that parents can just text and say, and say yes in the field. And that will count as an opt-in. So we can do that. Again, this is something that we've barely scratched the surface of because we've been only, it's been set up only to allow district texting for emergencies. So we can work with our principals, we can give them this additional tool, but we can also, we can also advise them on how to judiciously use it.
Are some schools or teachers using like enroll me, I think is what it's called, and some of the other texts? Are y'all connected with that? Or is that just kind of school by school, case by case?
It's, it's, it's school by school, case by case. The one service that I'm familiar with, Parkwood Elementary, is using Remind, which is, and that is, there's a lesson here for us that we need to, that we need to think about. Completely, completely independently, Parkwood uses this service, which is a free app. I don't know what the revenue model is, but it is a free app that Android and iPhone users can use. And she has strong, she has strong participation in that. And it's nice to have a system, it's nice to have a system-wide standard. But also, principals who take the initiative and who feel a certain ownership for a separate system sometimes get really good results for that. I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure how to balance the competing interests of making sure that everybody's got something robust that ties to Power School and all that stuff with the fact that a, an entrepreneurial principal can have better results potentially with an easier system. So we'll, we'll, I'm, I'm aware of that, and we're working on that. I do think that we need to make School Messenger available for all of our principals regardless. We're paying for it, we have the system. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not willing to look askance at a principal who's using another effective communication tool.
Well, aren't there other districts using School Messenger? Like you said, Wake and Guilford, are they using the same?
Yeah, they're using the same system, but they're not trying to text.
Because it almost seems like a big enough contract that they ought to come here and send a rep to work out these issues with our IT staff. And, I mean, I'm looking at, they can, they can, they claim to be able to push attendance information out to parents via text and other ways. They, their products claims to do all kinds of magic.
So they have been really helpful. And when these issues came up, I mean, one of our managers spent, and they spent an hour on the phone going over, tracking every phone number to prove that they did get the opt-in, they just didn't respond. That's how we were able to get the numbers. But I'm sure, and they actually had excellent training when we brought it in, that they even videotaped for us to reuse. So we, we will ask them to come back.
I would just add, one, I think the, the starting place, like the, the notion of for emergencies, for like significant emergencies and, you know, weather-related emergencies, I think is a great one. And that was my experience before coming into the school system was that's what a lot of five-star daycares provide as a service for their families and, and other services as well. I'm, I'm very glad we're paying less than half of what we were paying because when we first joined the board, we had this presentation, it was, what'd you say, $140,000?
$120,000.
Right. And, you know, we asked the question then, for that much, we have a system that wasn't that different from when I started teaching in 2003? And what, what's the bang for the buck?
It was different from when I started teaching.
I'm sure it was. So that, that makes me happy. And at the same time, communication with parents is, is a priority for me. It's a priority for all of us. I, I know it is. So the text side, like, I think the text side is interesting, and I'm glad you guys are going to investigate that. I don't feel an urgency to, to figure it out and like nail it tomorrow at all. On the call side, I do feel some urgency around improved, you've already, you've already noted the challenges around good data. I think we all know what those are, having good, accurate data all the time. One thing a principal told me about our current system is that it sends back a report immediately when they do a robocall that says, "These are the 10 numbers that didn't work." And, and I think that's really great. I think that's good feedback. The, the one thing I, I would like to see pretty, or at least figure out how we can do it more quickly is two-parent households that, that both want the messages. It could be parents living apart or living together. My wife is angry that I get the messages and she doesn't. But I mentioned that neighbor on purpose because we have a family that is separated and then remarried. We have three custodians of a child that may need to know if school's getting out early, right? If it's, a reminder is an early release day, or if school's closed. So, you know, asking a data manager, can you, can you get my wife, right? The, the call also, and sorry, the, the system only allows for one. That's where I think in 2016, we could be doing a little bit better. Yeah, and I think we, we have some principals that have sort of figured it out. And, but the, the one that recounted to me said it was really hard to figure out how to do that.
I think we have, I think we have a way to do that. I think the default settings may be tweaked to, and may have been way too conservative in the number of households that, in the number of phones that they'll call. If you send an emergency robocall, it lights everything up. Attendance calls and just general informational calls. The settings have probably been made too conservative.
And, and trust me, I, I don't want to be the reason that we start getting 100,000 angry people, right? Because we've just lit up everything of our everything. So I, I get the, the notion for caution. But I...
Can the opposite happen too, if they have three kids in the same school, that they get three calls?
Duplicate calls are already sorted out.
They can do that, they can do...
Yeah.
Do we have any sense at a, at the forum at Mount Vernon, one of our principals said that they had 200 blocked, you know, phones that had blocked DPS from calling. Do we have any idea why that would be? Yeah, I mean...
Nothing, no, no, no good data, just anecdotes.
But I think that was, that was an important comment from Dr. Logan. Because he has a large school, going out to a large number of people, and the number of not only blocked calls, but of telephone numbers that don't work. There are a lot of numbers that change. I mean, it is, I mean, he, what he explained is the struggle... I mean, it is, I mean, he, what he explained is the struggle to be able to make it, to even just to make it right within that one school.
Well, thank you for bringing this. I know it's a, it's a tremendous challenge and opportunity, and I know you guys take it seriously.
Continuing to follow up on it, there was an item for discussion and like I said, we'll continue to follow up. Did you want to see if there's any more public comment?
Sure. Um, I don't see anyone except for Mr. Long. Would you like to make some, no, um, yeah, we're good.
All right. In that case, we'll move forward with, uh, another update. We, we're eager to keep you guys up to speed on our efforts to upgrade our lighting in our system to LED lights. It's better quality light, it's, uh, uses less energy. We are attacking this, uh, issue from several points. It's some local capital money that, uh, our maintenance folks are using. There's some bond work that includes, and we do hope to entertain some performance contracting eventually, uh, to include some of that as well. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Barnes, Mr. Callaway to show you some good news on what we've been, what they've been doing. Gentlemen?
Good evening. Uh, before Brian gets started with the presentation, I just want to highlight the fact that our electricians and some of our old technicians are working nights and weekends, uh, to try to help install these lights, uh, without compensation for that. So, uh, we appreciate their volunteering to help us get these installed in schools as soon as possible.
All right. And this is the feel-good part of the, the meeting. This is a goal, good old-fashioned show and tell, I feel like right now. So, um, we were, we had a busy summer and, um, maintenance services really, uh, as Mr. Barnes mentioned, picked up, um, a, a lot of extra projects, a lot of extra duties that are generally outside of our, our normal scope of, of work. And, um, uh, we did, we did hire some contract labor too, it to kind of push us over the top right there before school started. But, uh, we've got a lot of amazing lights in a lot of schools. So I just wanted to, um, share a little bit about our strategy. Uh, we did use a little bit of local capital, um, money to, to kind of push these projects forward. And, um, we do have, um, ideas for kind of the next phase, phase two. So, uh, to begin with, um, some of our initial strategies, um, the metal halide light is the, uh, the old-fashioned gym light that buzzes incessantly, takes about 10 minutes to warm up. I'm sure many of us are familiar with that. We are in the process of eliminating the presence of that light in all of DPS, uh, which is very exciting for an energy nerd. Um, it's very exciting for our gym teachers and our spectators at, at all of our athletic events and, and whatnot. So, um, the efficiency on, on, on those versus the old technology is amazing. We actually had some of those lights in educational spaces, uh, some of our band and chorus rooms of all places where noise is, uh, something to, um, be mindful of. Watts Elementary's library actually had those lights there. So, um, we, we had, we made a lot of people very happy to, uh, to have functional lights. I would, I would say lights that you can accidentally turn off and immediately turn back on. But, um, so yeah, we did, we did focus a lot on the gymnasium space too. But, uh, we've deployed a lot of different style systems to kind of see what, see what works with us. We learned early on, um, a lot of our, uh, folks that are under the old lights kind of suffer from Stockholm syndrome a bit. And when you bring light, adequate lighting to the room, everybody misses their darkness. So we've, um, we've incorporated a lot of dimming capabilities and things like that, um, in future classrooms. But, I mean, all, a lot of it is really neat stuff too. And Glen Elementary now, they can push a button and the lights over the bright link will turn off and the rest of the room will dim. So it's, it's very stra- I mean, this is cunning edge technology we're putting in. And, um, yeah, so I'm, I'm really excited about this stuff. But, um, and we did, uh, we've been testing a lot of various options cause we don't have the same style light in every application. I mean, even just in this room, there's a couple of different, several different lights, um, you know, different kind of canned lights. And architects make the game really fun for, for me to, um, to give us a potpourri of fancy lights that are difficult to replace. So we're, uh, we're finding our way forward and, um, our electrician staff's been amazing with, um, uh, working with us and, and testing things out and kind of keeping a, a, a forward, forward launch on it. So last time I was, I was before you was back in April and, um, I presented this, uh, short list of just a, a few of the projects we had completed and kind of some that were in development. Well, that, that list looks like this now. We completed, um, many of those, a couple of those are still pending right now. A couple of those, we actually kind of tabled to, uh, future, uh, like Hill, Hillendale Elementary, whole schools. We made that into kind of a, a bond-focused project. And, um, Southwest Elementary, the whole school, we feel like is a very good candidate for the performance contract option. But we actually ended up, um, expanding, um, well beyond just that list. Uh, so this is a site map of all the schools in Durham. This is just, uh, mapping out on Google where we have sites and facilities. And, um, this shows, uh, where we've done energy projects and, um, many of these, most of these are lighting projects. I actually realized late that, um, some of these do include just energy projects. We've been doing the HVAC controls project, but we have touched, um, uh, thirty-seven sites with our lighting projects across the district, which is, um, pretty phenomenal. And we ended up having fifty-nine total projects. So that list that you saw in April was just kind of the, the starting block. And, um, we, the, the total net cost, um, I have to kind of be respectful when I speak around my teacher friends, when I tell them how cheap a project is and it's only forty thousand dollars or something like that. That, you know, this is capital money, which is very much different than our operational money, um, our normal operation money. Like our, our bond project, for instance, is, you know, just passed at ninety million dollars. So, um, by doing some of these projects, ten, fifteen thousand dollars, and we can do high-impact projects with, uh, pretty rapid paybacks. Um, in, in the grand scheme of a capital perspective, it is relatively cheap, um, to get real, real big bang for your buck. Part of that bang comes from the Duke Energy incentives that are on the table. I've mentioned before, I'm kind of a coupon cutter on this one. So we've actually used incentives that are out there, uh, through energy efficiency programs that we, we pay into. All ratepayers pay into it. And it's just up to the, uh, maybe the more savvy ones out there to use those, those things. And so we have, um, we've been milking them dry on, on that one. So, uh, they've been auditing us quite a bit and, um, did you all really put in that? Yes, we did. We put in all of these. So, uh, we have leveraged essentially that four hundred and sixteen thousand in net costs, uh, leveraged in another four hundred and eighty-seven kind of worth. So it's, uh, it's ended up being a much deeper, more substantive initiative than, um, than just the, the input that we had, which is a, a great program by, by Duke Energy that, that they've got. And, uh, overall, uh, we're estimating an annual avoided energy cost savings of a hundred and forty thousand dollars, which gives us about a three-year payback overall, just simple payback. That's, um, that's probably the definition of low-hanging fruit. And, uh, I've been getting pretty fat off of it here in the, in this first round. So we've, we've done a lot of the, the, the great stuff. And, um, I do want to show you some of the highlights of, um, some of those projects. The DSA main gymnasium, um, I don't, I don't know if y'all have been to any, have any of y'all been to any of these places too? So they're, they're now, I mean, recently, cause they're phenomenal now. So, um, the main gym, uh, we actually had to get a, a, um, telescoping forklift. We had a contractor do this one, but they brought a telescoping forklift to bring a really big articulated lift into the gym. This is just, this, this impressed a lot of the pastor buyers on Duke Street. Um, they're, they're putting it in there right around four-thirty, five o'clock one afternoon. And, um, we didn't cause accidents, but it, it was quite a sight to see. But, um, now this, I, I think, I think maybe if you look on the TV screen rather than the projector, you can kind of see a little bit more, a better, you should just go there though, cause now the gym is very well-lit. Uh, we did not refinish the floor in between those two shots. That was taken about two days apart. It, you can actually see, and I don't know if you've been or remember being in the, uh, the bleachers there, the, the arena seats. There's now lighting there, um, and we are saving, uh, several thousand dollars a year on, on energy costs in there. Overall, the energy savings, I think it was about forty-five percent energy savings on the project. So we're using almost half as much energy, but we're getting light output levels about four times what we had before. And, uh, we're, we're up to North Carolina standards on, um, on that. I mean, this was such an old facility that standards didn't exist, I think, when we built it. But, um, but yeah, so this, this is repeated through a lot of gymnasiums. The, with the first gym we did was Hillside, but, um, you may remember some of those folders or photos in the packet earlier. But, um, Glen Elementary, we did a whole school LED, um, swap out there. And, uh, they're, these are high-tech fixtures that, uh, communicate with one another. So we've got dimming available in every classroom now. It's, it's day, it's dark to daylight really. And, um, and of the way that a lot of, uh, teachers and, and students are experiencing, um, that, that facility. And, uh, C.C. Spalding, we did the front wing, the original por- portion of the building. Had, again, very old lights and just makes the hallways pop now. And, uh, same story in the classrooms. Everyone has dimmer switches there in that, that classroom setup.
Excuse me, Brian, and especially C.C. Spalding, that was a dark, dark school. And anybody who has been there knows how, I mean, it was, it was dreary walking through, and that's the difference.
It was. And how much, um, I think the cost on that one, just less than forty thousand dollars. And we, we had a contractor come and do that one. And we're looking at about eight thousand dollars a year in savings on just, just the lights, just the energy, not even the maintenance. Because we've before had high-maintenance kind of fixtures where, especially that age of the fixtures, we were having even more calls, callouts and things like that. So, um, let's see here. Uh, E.K. Poe is a school that the DPS electricians, uh, did all on their own. And we were on the front page of the Herald Sun over the summer there. I don't know if y'all noticed on a chance, but, um, but it was a, uh, that's our electrician Todd there. And I don't know what that object is, but, uh, you know, we have, I, I, I get to walk through a lot of these, uh, I get to walk through all our schools, but a lot of times I'm there at night and things like that. So I've, I've been threatening to, um, put together a little Instagram of, uh, the guinea pigs of DPS or something. Cause there's, there's a lot of them out there. But, um, our classrooms are very creative spaces too. So, um, but yeah, the, um, it's another creative space there in E.K. Poe. We ended up, um, collecting, what's my number there? Uh, over eight thousand pounds of, uh, metal that we ended up were sending off to the recycling, uh, folks there. So, I mean, all the old material, we broke down and disposed of properly. And, um, the, the new LEDs have, again, just, it's, uh, maybe not quite as bad as C.C. Spalding. C.C. Spalding had no windows and things like that. So it's kind of the older construction in the hallways.
Painting too.
And, right?
I mean, the porcelain.
Yeah. But the, the teachers here too have the, the same kind of, um, appreciation, I think, for the, the quality of light that's come out of it. It's fun to, um, see them and, and see that glow that, that they now have too on these projects. So, um, oh, there's that. That was the talking point for, um, all that waste collection. We had a dumpster out there for a few weeks over the summer. And, um, Merrick Moore is, is another school. We actually had done a performance contract here a few years ago. And, uh, lighting technology has really taken off in the last few years with LED technology. So, uh, the, kind of the old, old way of saving energy was, um, I mean, there are more efficient fluorescent tubes than what, uh, many of our schools have. But, um, some of the other strategies too were just remove some of the extra, um, go from a three, three-lamp fixture to a two-lamp. And, uh, yeah, technically you're meeting maybe standards, but you're, you're right on the borderline there. It, it, you kind of tell, can tell that something has changed in, in a, maybe a less lighting kind of direction. So LEDs, uh, take this to a new level, cause you can save energy and have more light output. And, uh, the hallways now just pop over there at Merrick Moore. And, uh, this is a, a collection of reactions from principals that we've, that we've had. And, uh, uh, your, uh, Mr. Hunt's on here from Merrick Moore, just kind of, there's a chorus of that welcoming feel. And, um, it really does transform the, the learning environment. So, um, we are very, I'm, I'm very hopeful to, uh, move forward with phase two, uh, which includes a, a lot of whole-school, uh, swap-outs, um, whole-school transformations. And, um, some of that it will be able to be covered with the bond. Um, we have about one point seven million in the bond for lighting projects. And, um, we are hopeful that some of them can be covered through performance contracts, uh, which basically collateralize guaranteed future energy savings and allow you to borrow that money, uh, to, to pay for projects now, knowing that they will save money later. The downside with that is that that's all operational. The, the bonus and the, the reason I, I love bonds is that's, um, that's a capital expense. It's not, we can actually drive down our operating budget, uh, through bond expenditures. But, uh, the performance contracts, you end up kind of flatlining, cause you, you match your, you, you just do a line, line item transfer. Instead of sending it to the utility, instead of literally burning the money, um, we, uh, we then send it to the bank to pay for that loan for all those projects. And, I mean, there is, there are extensions there of, you know, we are paying local people to put them in and, and things like that. So it's, it does, it's way, way of worth, more worthwhile to, uh, to go with something that changes classrooms and things like that than just, um, throwing away utilities. So, um, I don't think that was close to thirty minutes. So I, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions.
That was great. Any questions for Brian or the team? Really excited about it. And Brian's done a terrific job in tracking this and helping to educate the maintenance department as well.
As I always love show and tell, so I was, yeah, thanks. That was great. I, I, speaking of veteran teachers, I totally understand why you'd want to dim the room. The students thought I looked a lot better, as the light.
I just want to celebrate this work. And if you can pass on our, our hearty thanks to all the teams of people that have been working extra hours to do this. It's amazing to see the impact that it is making for children really quickly. I mean, we all care about the energy savings, but really, this is making schools better. They're more colorful. It's almost like you colorize schools. I mean, you're just, it's gorgeous, the, the results that you're getting. And, um, I remember when we talked about bond amounts, maybe you needed five million and we'd got one point seven sque- squos in there. So, um, you know, any way that we can continue to, to accelerate this work, I think is, is going to change. I mean, it almost makes schools look cleaner too, unless, you know, it was just.
They were always clean.
They were always clean, they look cleaner.
Now you can even see it better.
Exactly.
It's our hope that we can reinvest whatever it saved back into more projects that Brian and others can do. So we'd like to keep the momentum going.
Part of why we were trying to get more bond money to be able to do this sooner for children.
Brian, there were outside lights that were an issue as well. So there's different areas of focus. And you've done the metal, uh, gym lights, some classrooms and halls and some other areas will come up next?
There are a, a lot of areas of opportunity, right? We've, um, uh, I've been, oh, actually, let me pop back to that slide. You'll notice probably a lot of these are elementary schools. You know, kids being in elementary schools for six years straight and their first experience, um, uh, it, it, we have kind of a, a great mesh here of, uh, those, those are a priority for me to, to kind of welcome those kids in and not let them languish in a, uh, you know, underneath terrible lights. But, um, uh, these, these schools, um, are the ones that are basically left. Cause we did do some performance contracts and some renovations on a lot of our high schools and middle schools in the past. So, uh, it, it just so happens now that we do have mostly a, a, a stock of elementary schools that are, that are remaining. Following that, um, outdoor lighting is a, is a big, a dollar savings, but, um, you don't get that same. We don't have too many, I, I know we do have events and especially this time of the year when it gets dark so early, there are concerns and, and desires for light, but, you know, we're not holding class at two AM. So, um, uh, yeah, that'll kind of hopefully come later, later in the game. But we can also knock all of those out during performance contracts, which is, um, another reason to, uh, kind of go in that direction.
I'm speaking of the choir, but I would, I would just say that we, we make sure that our, no matter how this is written up, but including us writing it up and pressing send on an email, our, our partners over at the commission know about this work, that they're clear on it. As we start to talk about what an, what an actual maintenance budget might look like, not, this is what we can fix this year and the rest has got to go on hold. This is the kind of responsibility we need to show so that we have that trust and they understand. So keep, keep screaming about it, keep sharing it and, uh, good work.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. For members, there was one item on the follow-up page, um, about bell-tines. And I think Mr. Denton is working with our RNA, our DNA group to work on the survey. So we'll still get some of that information for you soon. And that was the only other follow-up I had at this point, was anything else we needed to bring back to you? Was there anything else we needed to bring back to you?
I think we have one outstanding that, that's just in my mind, is around the, what, um, at some point we need to hear, what is our feedback cycle to, um, employees that come and speak before us? Do you remember that work session where we had some employees talking about different issues? And, you know, we always say we don't engage in conversation really at any meeting, but what does that cycle look like? So let's get some clarity on that when we can. All right? We are adjourned at five forty-five PM.